If I can have everyone's attention, please. If you can silence your cell phones at this time, and if you have to take a call, please excuse yourself to step outside. I'd like to bring the Indian Trail Town Council meeting for Tuesday, July 24, 2018, to order. At this time, if everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
If you would remain standing, please, for our moment of silence. First item on the agenda is additions and deletions. Do we have any this evening? Mr. Combs?
If we could remove 9A1.
The conditional zoning request?
Yes.
For shops at Hanfield?
Yes.
Okay, I'll strike that.
And delete 5A1 and add to 5E employee recognition, Mr. Sadik. And add 10D Sagecroft Essex contract, Mr. Sadik.
Okay, so we're removing under business recognition? The first item?
Yes.
Okay, and adding under...
Hunbar and Bistro, yes.
Under 5B employee recognition? And under 10D Sagecroft Essex contract. Is that correct, Mr. Combs?
Correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, and no further additions or deletions, I will need a motion to approve the amended agenda, please.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Mr. McIntyre has made the motion to approve. All in favor? A motion carries unanimously.
Mayor Alvarez?
Yes, ma'am.
We have some additional signups. Is the signup sheet available just for a moment?
Yes, ma'am. First is a new business presentation. First business is Ultratan. Are you in attendance tonight?
Yeah, I'm up.
Okay, come on up to the podium. For those that don't know, we started inviting new businesses that have opened up to come to council meeting to give them a minute at the podium to introduce themselves and welcome them to town.
You can take the microphone out of the handle if it's a little bit high. It doesn't move very well.
Okay, we are relocating. We're currently in Indian Trail, and we offer both indoor tanning and spray tanning, as well as a line of skincare.
Yeah, I've actually managed the Indian Trail store for about four years before becoming a district manager. We've seen a lot of the people in Indian Trail, just the business grow, and people are really starting to care about their skin, care about their looks, you know, getting ready for vacations. It's exciting to have a new building for it.
Well, on behalf of the council and the town of Indian Trail, we'd like to welcome you and present you with a plaque.
Thank you.
Wishing you years of success.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that brings us to item B. That would be the Miracle League update. Mr. Tryon, I'm gonna yield the floor to you, sir.
Mr. Dreese.
Oh, all right. Mr. Dreese and Mr. Tryon.
I think Mr. Dreese got it.
Okay.
Hey, how's it going? I met with Patrick yesterday, and it seems that the memorandum of understanding, or resolution, or whatever we're calling it, expired after two years. And we just moved the location, I guess, in the park, so it's gonna take at least a year to get my guys retooled for that place. I'd be happy to come in some meeting and do my standard information briefing for the people on the council that hasn't seen it before, or wants update. Basically, we have a general contractor that's guaranteed to do all the site prep, construct the pad, and Hugh could've started work nine months ago. But then we'd have a concrete pad, 200 feet by 200 feet, exactly where you guys don't want it, next to the playground. So, once we're locked into a location, I'm gonna have that contractor go in there and make sure that he can still do the work where you guys want it. Then we need $250,000, well, $200,000 for the rubber, because we're doing the 200-foot field. Currently, we're... Has anybody been to a Knights game lately? If you saw a double play, did you see the Highway 55 Burger logo come up, and next to it, the Miracle League logo go up? So every time they get a double play, we get a donation and that kind of stuff. So, we're very optimistic that's gonna lead to the $250,000 grant. I think that's all I got. So, Patrick?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, the intent is to have David with us tonight, just be... The main thing is because the resolution ran out last month, and we're putting it before council to see if they would like to renew the resolution, or have any questions to David this evening tonight.
Any questions, council?
I have a few, yes.
Okay.
Hi, David. I've got quite a list of... I don't know if this is appropriate time, but I have quite a few questions, so I can get myself up to speed on the Miracle League of Indian Trail. You guys were established, what, back in 2014, I believe?
Yeah, that sounds right.
And you're a 501(c), effective on October 30th of that year. The Miracle League, the Board of Directors that's presently for Indian Trail, are you guys salaried?
No.
Okay.
Everybody's a volunteer. Nobody makes a nickel.
And how long have you been raising funds for the field, the equipment?
Probably three years.
And during that three years, how much money has been raised?
Actual money in the bank, probably around 15 grand. In pledges, we had over 300,000, but due to some delays, which I will take full responsibility for, we lost a large pledge, and we had to regroup.
Excuse me. So, my next question was gonna be, how much money was sitting in the bank after expenses, the 15 grand? As a 501(c), have you had an independent audit performed on your organization?
No, I have a friend that's a CPA that takes a look at our books. We do all of our recording and all of our reports that are required by the IRS and the state, what do you call it, Secretary of State.
Okay.
So, we're a 501(c)(3) in good standing.
And what is the total dollar amount that you believe that you need?
The reason I have to be vague, because again, I don't have an exact location yet, but it's probably because the playground is kind of separate from the field now. According to the construction documents that I got from the Miracle League National Headquarters, probably in the neighborhood of 450,000.
Okay, when do you expect to receive all the donations and the money?
We hope to have them... Well, let me clarify something, because I don't want people to misunderstand. A lot of donations to a Miracle League construction is in-kind from construction companies. So, like my contractor, he's not gonna give me $200,000 for he can clear the land, build the field, and I can give them the $200,000 back. He's donating the materials and the labor and all of that. And then, as a 501(c)(3), we will give them a letter thanking them for their donation for the current market value of that contribution. So, if you look at my bank account, that's why I said it's misleading, I have... He's already pledged it, so it's $200,000, but it's not in the bank. It's in his construction company.
Okay, then based on that, so you'll have in-kind donations, but then you're gonna have to have cash outlay for the equipment?
The cash outlay, the main cash outlay is for the rubber. There's only three companies that the Miracle League allows to do the rubber. A standard field is 100 feet, and the rubber costs a little over 100,000. Our field, because it's gonna be adults, is gonna be 200 feet, so you would think that's twice as much rubber, but it's four times much, because it's a diamond. For every foot you go out that way, you're gaining two feet more rubber. So, I have an informal quote from one of them that said they would do it for $200,000. So, that's why I said I could get you a concrete pad in six months, but it won't have rubber on it, so what good is it? So, until I have the $200,000 in the bank to pay for the rubber, I'm not gonna have my guy put the concrete pad in.
Reasonable. Let's see. So, does all the equipment that is gonna be required need to be from specified vendors due to Miracle League rules and...
The... Yeah.
Is it like a franchise, the Miracle League?
No, no. The only thing that I had to sign, my board had to sign, was a letter saying we would only buy rubber from one of their approved vendors. And that's more of a safety thing, Jerry. You know, you don't want kids tripping on rubber that's not done right. Anything else, you know, if I got an asphalt contractor instead of a concrete contractor, I'd be putting in a 200-foot asphalt pad. But the guy that volunteered is a concrete guy, so we're gonna have a 200-foot concrete pad. What the rubber guy cares about is that it's flat, level, and smooth. He don't care if it's asphalt or concrete. The fence, anything like that, we can use any vendor we want. It's just the rubber. But that's also the most expensive item.
Have you discussed with Indian Trail the expected yearly maintenance budget for upkeep?
Mm-hmm.
Do we know what those costs would be?
No. Again, once we got a site, we can know that. But the rubber, the rubber that they put in at Malden is 12 years old, and I think they say their maintenance cost is repainting the lines on it.
So, what's the, you know, the utilization rate of the other locations like Malden? Are they booked, you know, year-round, or how does that work?
It's just like most baseball fields, just like your field, you guys got out there. You have a spring league and a fall league. You normally have eight teams, you know, because you only got one field. There's 300 fields up and running, so I'm assuming we're gonna be smart enough to do the same thing.
Do you know how many residents of Indian Trail you anticipate using these fields?
Residents of Indian Trail, no. Union County?
Indian Trail first, since Indian...
Yeah, see, the trouble is, the statistics by the census people are more by county.
Okay.
And I don't have... I didn't bring my slides with me today, because I thought this was gonna be... You know, I thought I'd come back and give you guys the information. It's on one of my slides. I think there's like... You don't remember, do you?
I don't remember.
I think it was 12,000... It's in the Bureau Statistics on your Census Board thing. I think it was 12,000 for the county. But most... Malden draws from 100 miles. You know, there is a field up in the university area in North Charlotte, but, you know, I don't see this as an Indian Trail project or a Union County project. We never have. It's gonna draw from Anson County and Lancaster, and, you know, we're not gonna check passports at the gate. You gotta be Indian Trail kid to play on it.
So, it's not gonna be just an empty field out there?
No.
It'll be, you know, probably used...
Yeah, well, it'd be as empty as your fields are. I mean, I go out there and play frisbee golf twice a week, and half the time, your guys' fields are empty too, right? Because it's during the day, and there's no leagues going on then. Monday through Friday during the school year, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Now, your playgrounds are pretty packed.
I'm glad you brought that up. The existing, the ADA Playground, that was built by Indian Trail, and kudos to Jay and the staff. I noticed on the memorandum of understanding that that's still included in your memorandum?
Yes.
I reviewed that earlier today on the website, and, you know, initially, that was included as part of the Miracle League package. And my understanding is that we had to move forward as a town to secure the grant money that was available before it expired, because if we'd waited, it may not have been available, which I think was a good move by the town. But that leads to...
The town did that jointly with us. I don't... You can ask Jay, but I don't think the paperwork would've been submitted for that if we hadn't come in and told him about it.
Thank you for your involvement in that, for sure. But the memorandum of understanding is still a bit open-ended, as far as I can see it. So, it looks like it needs, at a minimum, to be rewritten, and not necessarily just extended tonight. And that was part of my concern. Also, listening to the monies, it sounds like there needs to be a more focus on getting those donations rolling in the event that Crooked Creek Park's second phase starts taking off. And, you know, I don't wanna see the residences, the park delayed, based on, you know, waiting on one piece of it.
Yeah, I don't wanna build a field in the middle of your forest out there without any parking and no way for my players to get there either. Patrick and I have discussed this.
So, you know, my recommendation was gonna be tonight is that, based on the feedback I'm hearing and the questions that have developed from reading that, is that we don't extend the memorandum of understanding at this time. We get a little bit more clarification as to what should go in it, and then bring it back before council, and try to make a decision at that time.
Just for clarity, there is... As far as I know, there's been no memorandum of understanding drafted. This resolution is a indication of the board's support for the idea of the Miracle League having a space at Crooked Creek Park, and I'm happy to make that more specific with working with y'all.
Right, you're absolutely right.
If that's what y'all wanna do next, for the next step. But that has not been drafted yet, and we can certainly take that step for a future meeting in the short term to get this, keep this rolling, if that's the council's interest.
Is there any other questions? If not, is there a motion you have for that? Go ahead, Charlie.
David, the Rushing family donate, or they were going to donate $250,000.
Mm-hmm.
What's the status on that?
Well, that's the donation we lost. I don't know why, but I assume it's because we didn't do it quick enough, or I don't know. I was a soldier for 22 years, so I take full responsibility for everything my organization does or doesn't do.
Did you get a letter or anything from the Rushing family?
No, I did not.
Then how did you know it was lost, then?
A phone call.
Okay.
Have you thought about reaching out to maybe, you know, Levine, or any of the...
Jerry, what I have found is, you know, like I said, the Highway 55 and stuff, the further the organization is from the town, the more receptive they are, because they're not into minutia. They just wanna field, watch kids play, don't care whose name's on it or anything like that. So, yeah, but I mean, we've sent letters to Tim Tebow. We're sending letters to anybody that'll take our postage to try to get this built. But you're right, I shouldn't have used the word memorandum. That's the... It's just a resolution of support.
Did someone have any other questions or have a suggestion?
I'd just say, let's redo it, and come back and talk about it later. You can talk about it all night, but we'll just come up with something that everybody's happy with, or not. Or not, or not, but, you know, that's... I agree with Jerry. If we're gonna do something, we need to look at it again. And, you know, one of the questions, David, you were talking about when you said retooled or redone. In all actuality, the reason the field was moved was because it didn't fit where the original spot was. The, you know, the field's been moved to another portion of the park, and I just wonder how, and you may not have a good answer for this, how does that really make a difference to these people that are donating money, as long as you do have a location, and you say, "We've got a location"? And I'm just curious, why would they care whether it's over on this side of the park or that?
Well, the guy that cares the most is the guy that has to remove the trees and move the dirt. You know, I... When we were still painting the lines on the parking lot and saying, "This is where the field was gonna be," I met him at the park, and he pasted off, and he did an informal survey on how many dump trucks of dirt, and how many trees he was gonna have to take out, and all that other stuff. Well, he's gonna have to do the same thing. I don't think it's gonna be a problem, but I'm not a construction guy. You know, Patrick's in engineering, and the meeting I was at, we had, what, three engineers in there? And I think everybody understood, until your guy walks the ground, he can't tell you how much work it's gonna be to put it there. And I'd rather be upfront with you about that. I mean, you know, I just found out about this new location yesterday. I'm just like the mayor. He can't speak for the town until the town council votes. I can't speak for my board until they vote, and they haven't voted either. So, you know, this is all new. But I will say that a $250,000 grant is being applied for, and we will hear back in October. So, if you guys wanna change anything, please do that now, for I know, because that will definitely affect the way a foundation looks at a grant.
Well, a couple of different scenarios right there, and I might ask the council that if it's... October's not that far away, is maybe we stay neutral until we hear about whether or not you get the $250,000. You get a $250,000 grant, and that would be a... That'd certainly be a big green light to take off and say, "Hey, you know, let's back this, you know, let's go forward with it," because hopefully, that's what's gonna happen. You can get a $250,000...
Yeah, but the resolution is one of the things that, yeah, including that package, saying, "We got the land."
Yeah.
Now, if we don't have the land, tell me, and I'll find the land.
Well, not... Basically, you've got the land.
Okay.
I mean, town's telling you. I think the town's saying right now, "You've got the land. We moved it from one spot to the next." So, and the last question I have for you, I know that you're directly dealing with the Miracle League, and this may be a question for you, it may be a question for Patrick also. You know, I did some, asked some questions. I asked Jay, and I asked Patrick, and, you know, there's other fields across the country that don't, that basically do the same thing as a Miracle League, they just don't have the Miracle League name written on it. And I do have a question after I ask this question to Patrick. If the Miracle League name was not on it, how much money do you think we could, that it would actually cost or save by doing it without the Miracle League?
David, I could answer your question by saying how much it would cost us to go out there and build it with the same material that the Miracle League is planning on building it. I could say, now, Jay and I, we did some research. We have four cost estimates, and the lowest one that we came up with, which is about $380,000, which is close to what David... Now, and ours, David, we kinda included the lights, the dugout, the fence, and all that. And David, I don't wanna deviate from your question. That would be a question to David later on. Are these items, like the stands, the fence, the dugout, the lights, is part of your campaign and part of your cost estimate, or it's separate items?
Yeah, and like I told you before, I thought, you know, according to the construction documents, and these are all estimates, because it's a national organization, you know, how much a fence costs in Indian Trail, North Carolina, and how much a fence costs in San Diego is probably a little bit different.
That's right.
But if my guy's gonna do the site prep, and I can get the rubber in for 200,000, then that leaves 50,000 from that 250,000 grant, plus the other money we already got, and that more than covers, I think, if you've done the estimates, the lights and the dugouts and that kind of stuff.
Right, so to get back to your question, David, there are many fields out there, national fields, that do not have the Miracle League names on them. You agree, David?
Right.
Right.
Okay, well, that kinda answers my question, because I thought there would be a bigger savings between if we contributed and did it without the Miracle League name on it, which would be the same thing. And my next question to you would've been, would that be necessary to have a Miracle League name on it? And you probably were gonna say yes, but, you know, if it were something identical, then it'd save $100,000.
Right, right, yeah.
You know, I don't know that you would... You may wanna do it anyway, or do it without the Miracle League name on it.
I'm only here because Andy, when I was sitting where you're sitting, said, "Hey, where's my son gonna play?" If we have a place for the kids to play...
It really doesn't matter, does it?
I don't care. I don't even care if Dave's involved in it. I just want a place for the kids to play, period. You know, if Jay wants to run a league, he can run a league. If Patrick wants to build a field, he can build a field, and I can have a whole lot more time to watch my television, I guess.
Well, I guess Jay's gonna be running the league anyway, would he not be? I mean, wouldn't it not be, and Indian Trail would be running the, basically, the games that came out of there? Wouldn't...
Well, initially, and I don't know, because, you know, we're... Most Miracle Leagues are like a little league. Jay doesn't run the leagues that the little league plays on there. They just sign up the field, and they run their own games, and they do everything else. If you guys wanna run it, hey, I got no problem with that.
No, I don't know who runs...
So, I think the way the resolution was written right now is that the town would manage all of the scheduling for games and league play. I know the league that's run out of the Charlotte branch, which is out of the YMCA, is a YMCA employee, so it's not staffed by the Miracle League. It would be local staff that runs or works for that organization that would run the actual facility. In talking with other departments around the country, really mainly North Carolina, South Carolina, there's a Miracle Field in Durham. Then they did two non-Meracle Fields, one in Raleigh, one in Spartanburg, and they're all run through their, you know, town or city Parks and Rec Department, regardless of whether it's a Miracle League or not.
So, the Miracle League doesn't do the scheduling and all that?
They don't do the scheduling. The, I think the perk or the benefit of using the name is having that on their website. So, if someone were to search for a Miracle League field or organization, they would be able to go to the national website, type in their zip code, their address, and it would pop up, you know, the closest organization. To look back at the costs, or look at this cost that we were just discussing, the probably the biggest difference between our field that we're looking at doing here versus another department would be that the size of it. So, a standard Miracle Field, like Mr. Dre said, is up in Charlotte, 125 feet or 100 feet. This one would be much bigger, which changes the cost to make it more expensive, because you have, like he said, twice as much rubber.
And we've always, I mean, since the first day that Andy asked us to do this, us being the town, we needed the 200 feet for the adults could play on it. 100 feet is fine, but if you want the disabled veterans, and you want the adults, Carolina Storm, the local team here, to be able to play on it, if it's 100 foot, they're gonna hit a homerun every time. The 200 feet is for the adults can play on it. The 200 feet, heck, they're okay with blacktop. So, what we're trying to do is build a hybrid field. And most fields that the Miracle League puts in now are 200-foot fields for the adults can use them.
I'm done.
Okay. So, council, do you have direction for Patrick? Just to...
I would say, just wait. Why don't we wait on the... I mean, that's my...
Table it and bring it back at the end of October?
Well, I think what David's saying, though, he needs some kind of commitment from the town to say that the...
To put it in the package.
The property is there, available for the field.
Well, if you need that for the 250,000, I mean, I don't think that's a problem to say, you know, you've got the, you know, that's your field for...
That's basically what the resolution's doing, I mean.
Right, to say it, and, you know, maybe we limit it to October or to maybe the end of the year and then revisit it after the end of the year again, if that so be what council wants to do, so.
Yeah, if we can just limit the scope of it to the property at this point to keep you moving forward with your, trying to get the grant. If that was, if that's enough.
Right, yeah, that should be enough for the grant. I just wanna make sure everybody still understands that whether we build the field or whatever, there's gonna need to be a parking lot next to it and a bathroom, and that's what the resolution was saying. The town was gonna do that. The town was gonna do the parking lot, the town was gonna do the bathroom, we were gonna do the field. You know, if you guys want to build a Miracle League field and I can get a grant for it, I got no problem with the grant going to you guys. You know what I mean? I'm not a construction guy. I'm just trying to get a place for the kids to play, that's all I care about.
Patrick?
Mr. Mayor, if I add David managing the project and constructing the project and being part of Phase Two, the preference for us to have the flexibility to kinda coordinate these activities. We could do it with you or we could do it ourselves. So I think we need to keep the communication. But that's the best way of doing it, is to coordinate all these activities.
Right, right, I agree.
The roadway, the culverts, the storm drainage, I mean, it's a big one.
Right, yeah. Now, but the Miracle League only cares where you want that field and us raising money to build it. You know, we're not doing the culverts and the bolt roads and the, it's just beyond our scope.
We have direction to work with Karen to come up with something that we could provide David, so he will stay on course with that one.
Okay.
David, when would you know whether you're gonna get that grant or not?
I, it has to be in by September, and I think it's the end of October, maybe early November.
So by the first of the year, we would know for sure?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that all, council? Patrick, you have enough information?
No, sir, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dre. That brings us to the Monroe Road Improvements Project, Scott Cole.
Thank you, Mike. Good evening, mayor and town council. Thank you for having me back to Indian Trail. This is my first time in the new building, and it's quite a building. So it should, definitely something to be proud of. But I'm glad to be here and glad to provide an update on the Old Monroe Road project. Since the last time we talked, we have updated our traffic forecast and analysis. And recall that we basically design our projects for a 20-year forecasted traffic volume, so that they're not obsolete the day that we open them to traffic. We want them to last and to provide a safe and good function for the next 20 years. And so that's why we do this forecast and we do this analysis. But I'll update you on that. Provide a brief super street primer. I know we've got a few new council members that are not really fully familiar with that concept, so I'll provide that brief overview and then talk about general project status and upcoming milestones. So we did update our 2040 traffic forecast, which the forecasted volumes included planned land use. So if the council, for instance, approves a rezoning that provides significantly more density and significantly more traffic volumes than what is planned in the current land use plan, then that would be additional traffic to our roadway that wasn't in our forecast. But also included are the funded projects. Recall that when we had a 2035 forecast that we began doing our planning on, that several of the projects, like projects on 485 and projects on 74, were not funded at that time or were not included in that original forecast. And then we also, the forecast also includes updates to the Metro Line of Regional Model. Okay, so this is a regional traffic model that also feeds the region's air quality model and provides us with a lot of data that we have to generate these forecasts. The basic results of the forecast were that that traffic volumes dropped about 3% from the 2035 forecast. This was not really a significant amount, considering all the additional projects to the area. And what we are seeing and have seen and continue to see is growth. You all know that the area is growing rapidly and people are moving to the area because it's a great place to live and people wanna live here. And that trend will continue and may even accelerate over time. So the conclusions from the analysis that was run from the traffic forecast were that both alternatives that we reviewed operate comparably. So we're talking about a super street alternative versus a traditional four-lane widening with standard all-movement intersections. However, the super street increases safety, improves safety, provides for better bicycle and pedestrian accommodation, provides better traffic signal progression along the route, and allows for more robust capacity in meeting a future traffic demand. So when you do feel the need to approve a rezoning, the super street will help to accommodate the additional traffic that that rezoning may generate. So what is a super street? And we see this diagram, we call this one super street intersection. Basically, the way a lot of the alternative designs that we're pursuing now work is through a phase reduction, a reduction in the number of phases at the traffic signal at the main intersection. But very simplistically, with the super street, the through movements and all of the movements on the main line, in this case, Old Monroe Road, function as they did before. In other words, on Old Monroe Road, you'll still be able to go straight through the intersection. You'll still be able to make a right turn and you'll still be able to make a left turn onto the side street. Where the super street differs is from the side street. So turning from the side street, a left turn and a through movement are the most unsafe and the movements that can result in the most severe crashes. So all of those movements from the side street are redirected to a right turn. And in this configuration, you do have a traffic signal at the main intersection and either a traffic signal either initially or the ability to add traffic signals at the U-turn points. But you'd make a right turn out of the side street, go down to the U-turn point, and make your U-turn there and then proceed through the intersection if you're going to the left, a net left, we call it. Or if you're making a net through, you'd make a right and proceed on your through movement. So why do they work? Because of the advantages of this design, they do reduce crashes significantly. And you see a crash reduction of up to 46% there, but also the severity of the crashes. So those types of crashes that result in the most severe injuries are the T-type crashes, the T-bone crashes, as people call them. And this dramatically reduces the T-type crashes. In addition, it reduces delay through superior progression of the traffic signals. It helps us control speed, and we're not talking about stopping people at every traffic signal. On the contrary, we're talking about pacing traffic through the corridor with the traffic signals, such that if you exceed the speed limit, you will find very quickly that you are going to stop at the traffic signals. But if you obey the speed limit, then you will progress through the corridor smoothly and efficiently. So left turns out of the side street, as I mentioned before, are unsafe. And in the standard intersection, you have a total of 32 conflict points, with the worst of those conflict points being right there at the center of the intersection, the crossing-type conflict points. But with the super street-type intersection, you have a total of 14 conflict points and only two of those being the crossing-type conflict points. The rest are merge-and-diverge-type conflict points. So we do see a significant reduction in crashes. This was a study done by NC State for the department and saw, again, a phenomenal reduction in crashes of several different types there. With the super street implementation, there is less travel time along the corridor. So basically, you know, it's like I was telling a citizen downstairs in the pre-meeting that we had with some of your citizens, is that if we took all the signals out of Old Monroe Road, there would be tremendous additional capacity. Of course, you couldn't get out of the side streets, you couldn't get onto Old Monroe Road, but there would be tremendous additional capacity. So when we drop those standard intersections in, those standard traffic signals, it greatly reduces the amount of throughput on that corridor. Basically takes that right-of-way from Old Monroe Road and gives it to the side streets. But with the super street, you have reduced wait time or delay and superior signal coordination. Now, how does that work exactly? With a conventional phasing, because of your through movements in each direction and your protected left turn movements in each direction, you basically divide that traffic signal timing cycle into so many little bits that nobody gets adequately served. And even on the main line, you only get about a third of the green time that's available throughout the entire phase. However, with the super street phasing, because the phasing is greatly reduced and that phasing is split apart to the main intersection and the U-turn points, you have a simple two-phase signal at each point and you double that green time on the main line by making it about two-thirds of the entire cycle. In addition, the way these, the super street works is that each side of the road functions or operates independently so that you can allow that superior progression, maximize efficiency, and helps you pace traffic speeds. But not only for the motorist, pedestrian and bicycle access is greatly improved through bicycle and pedestrian safety. So you cut down the 24 conflict points at a standard intersection down to eight conflict points for the bicyclist and pedestrian. In addition to that, you triple the number of opportunities to cross. So if you have a main intersection here, you have an opportunity to cross here, but you also have an opportunity to cross at each of the U-turn points. So you basically double the opportunities to cross. And we've all seen people just a few hundred feet walking across a main road when they really had, you know, instead of walking down that route for a few more hundred feet and taking the marked and signed opportunity to cross, that people just won't walk, it's funny, they're out, they may be out there for exercise, but they won't take the safe movement a few hundred yards down the street for the crossings. This allows more opportunities to cross and cross safely. So super streets in North Carolina, this is not a new or experimental design. This is something we've implemented in hundreds of intersections and locations throughout the state and is quickly becoming our default design for North Carolina because of the benefits to operations and the benefits to safety. So looking at the, why would you choose a super street? Because of your improvement to safety, travel time, reduction in congestion, you're able to reach businesses directly without delay and relocating them to another location to get in. You're able to accommodate growth and it is safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. So the town provided us with a resolution. And they said in that resolution that they wanted full movement intersections and no super street. Those are the two things that we are not providing in our current design. I know, no, we're not providing no super street, that's a double negative, but it comes out to a positive. What we are providing, as requested in your resolution, are the 35 mile an hour posted speed, protected left turn lanes, curb and gutter, six-foot sidewalks, landscape median, crosswalks, pedestrian refuge islands, ADA ramps with truncated domes, multi-use trail, and no on-street bike lane. The next steps for us, we have completed our environmental document and we're into final design. We have 25% plans, and those were available downstairs for your citizens to review and look at and look at what impacts they had to their property, if they have property along the corridor. And so we're moving forward through design. Next step is to add our drainage to the design and then coordinate with utilities and add the utility relocation to the design. From that, in the spring, late spring, early summer of next year, we'll move into the right-of-way and utility relocation phase. So we'll start acquiring that right-of-way. And when we have substantial amounts of it acquired, we'll work with the utility companies. We're already coordinating with the utility companies, but we'll work with them at that time to relocate so that we can proceed with construction in 2021. And it'll probably be about a two, two and a half, maybe even a three-year timeframe to construct. So, all that being said, do you have any questions?
Counsel?
Scott, I have several. First one that pops up, you know, I just saw where you've got a number of super streets across the state.
Yes, sir.
Hundreds. As you know, we have a lot of residents in our town that are against the super street. And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, council does what the residents want us to do and the residents don't want it. Were there other examples that you might give where a town has, or a city or town may be objected to it that may have changed their mind or?
Well, we do have an implementation of super streets in Holly Springs, North Carolina, which is up in the Chapel Hill-Carboro area. And we actually have some positive feedback from the town, from the mayor. We're actually feature the mayor on a video that we put together about super streets. So we do have some positive feedback, absolutely.
Another quick question, too, is you know that the council, the previous council, put together a resolution along with Stallings that we didn't want the super streets. And then I had heard from some residents, too, that the town didn't want, wasn't, was behind the super streets. And I'd never, I had never heard that the town was behind the super streets. Can you, does that make any sense to you?
Yes, sir, I mean, we didn't get a resolution, I believe, from the town supporting it, but during the early planning process, both towns had told us that they were in support.
Now, how early are you talking about?
We started the planning process in 2013. And through 2015, that was when we had support.
So you're saying that the support kinda changed, the closer it got to the time to do it, that it started to change somewhat, is it? Okay, and how seriously do you guys take the, and I don't mean seriously, obviously, you listen to the residents, but you basically are gonna do what you wanna do. Or not what you wanna do, I guess I should say, what you think is the best to do. What do you weigh in to what the residents really wanna do?
Well, certainly, we have to balance all the input into the project, you know, and apply our engineering judgment to kind of the best way to go. You know, just like you all are elected, but you have to make a decision, right? And you don't necessarily put every decision out there for a vote. We understand that we have to balance all the needs, not only the needs of the town of Indian Trail, but the needs of the folks on either side, right? Because they're gonna use this route to get from point A to point B. And there are 20,000-plus cars a day on this route now. So we recognize that we're hearing from some of the constituents of the town, but we believe that because of the safe aspects of the route and the ability... we believe that because of the safe aspects of the, of the route and the ability to get, get through the route, get from point A to point B efficiently, that we're, we're moving forward with the right thing for all the parts involved.
And my last question being, and it, it's kind of a minute question, but what, what could the town do? What, what can we do to, to, to further change the way you guys think? Or what do we need to do that would change the way you guys think about, about a super street and, and going to a four lane? And I, I don't even know that, that you're the person that I should ask that question to, but you, you look like an honest guy. But do you have any recommendations that we, that, what, what a council may can do, a town might can do to, to change what, what you, well, what the DOT is doing?
Yeah, I'd say continue to work with us. We've got excellent working relationship with staff and I think with, with council, with you all. You know, share with us your concerns, what the issues are, not just, hey, we, we feel this, we feel that. You know, we're, we're engineers and we're trying to relate, you know, with the feelings of, of others. We understand that change is, is difficult, but, you know, I think that, you know, we need to, we need to work to address specifics and not to say, we like this and we don't want that. We're looking for data or facts to help us move forward in the right direction.
Federal David? Ms. How?
I think part of the problem here is, in 2005, everybody wanted Monroe Road widened. And this went on for quite a while. And then all of a sudden, a name called Super Streets came in, into the light. Nobody knew what a, a super street was. I mean, maybe, if we took a raise of hands right now, most people never heard that word before a couple of years ago. So when, when the councils are sending you letters and trying to let you know how they feel, the vote was based on the fact that it was widening. We know you have to do curb and gutter and that, but, you know, the average layperson just doesn't understand all the intricate parts of the DOT period. And I think, I think this was a little misleading because we, not necessarily from you or anything, but it was the fact that if I had to make a judgment back then, I would, may, would have made it because it was going to widen Monroe Road and nothing else.
So, so for us, we are widening Old Monroe Road. We are widening it to four-lane wide, okay? And we consider a super street an intersection alternative, okay? It's not, basically what you're going to see through Old Monroe Road from one end to the other is the same with or without a super street. But the super street does have a different treatment, and it's a treatment that, that works effectively and works safely. And that's kind of the, the, where, where the change comes about. Not only that, but, you know, the advent of this design with the time, with time moving forward. You know, I don't know that when it was quoted exactly, but was certainly not prevalent in North Carolina, some 12, 13 years ago.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I seem to always have comments, but, out of the 300 super street configurations here, you've had one, Holly Springs, that's voiced approval and, you know, their satisfaction with it or a change of mind when they were, from when they went into the project as a...
So, so I understand that when we say 300 implementations, it's not that we had 306 mile corridors implemented, but we, you know, for years, we have had these point directional crossovers that you've seen out on 74, that you can make a left off of 74 onto the side street, but not a left out of 74. That's typically at the stop sign controlled intersection that come up to 74. So that is a basic implementation of super streets, that directional crossover that left and. So, you know, one of the more recent implementations of super street that we did get positive feedback on was...
During your presentation, some of these, the configurations, they looked a lot different than what I'm seeing on 74. I didn't see any bulb turnouts necessarily on, on what you were showing here. Is, is this what we're going to get, what, what you just showed in this presentation?
What the difference is there is a much wider median. So if you have that wide median, you need the bulb on the, on the outside edge, it's lesser. But if we have a wider median, then we have a wider footprint overall. So we have narrowed in the median just to accommodate the turn lane and, and bulved out at select locations to accommodate that U-turn. Otherwise, we have a wider footprint overall, more impact to your basic property.
And I guess the, the $10 million question really, for, for me, is that, why should the residents pay for something they do not want? That's really the crux of it.
Okay, so, you know, I, I know that the residents want relief from that, and I know they want to stay proud of the travel, and that's, that's what they're getting. The town made a commitment back in 2012, 2013, I'm sorry. And we are trying to deliver on that commitment and trying to accommodate the needs and wishes of the town to provide a safe and efficient corridor, to provide mobility and, and traveling safety.
If for some reason the, the town council decided not to fund this with the $10 million bond, what would that do to the schedule potentially?
I, I don't know because we haven't evaluated that. Certainly, the addition of the money helped us move the, to pull the project forward and deliver it more quickly than we had previously hoped to. You know, I, I would hope that the town wouldn't change its commitment, but if, if that is the town's wishes, then we would evaluate what, what alternatives there were and how it would impact the project overall, what we were able to build and...
Thank you, Scott.
Scott, was some of this money used or ready for pre-planning or something?
So, yeah, we have, we are spending funding on what we call preliminary engineering.
Okay, thank you.
When we, when we talk about phases of a project, we talk about preliminary engineering, right-of-way, and facilities and infrastructure. And so, yes, preliminary engineering being our environmental document that we have completed and are designing during the process.
Thank you.
Ms. McIntyre?
Mr. Cole, a few questions. First, the addition of, or the bond for $10 million for the super street was to increase the time that this project would be built, right?
Accelerated.
Accelerated, exactly. Thank you. But I think the bond was passed in 2011, if I'm not mistaken. So right now, the work construction will begin in 2021. So during that time, it took us 10 years, 10, I guess it's a million dollars per year to kind of speed it up. If the town had not put that $10 million in, what would have been the timeline to speed that up? Because the reason I'm asking that question is based on discussions that we've had, or we've, we've had and other responses we've received, is that the funding mechanism for the road in relations to Matthews and Stallings was that they, the, the travel time, the condition, the volume of traffic warranted that they did not need to put any money up. But based on the fact that Indian Trail, as big as we are, bigger than in terms of that road traveling for us, you know, where people travel in Indian Trail, we needed to put that to be able to do it in conjunction with our project. So the question I'm asking is, for $10 million, it means that we waited 10 years to get that, or we will wait by then, 10 years to get that project up. And the concern I have from that is the bond extension was for three years, which means that in 2018, 2021, you use it or lose it. So that's kind of where I'm concerned in terms of how much did it really speed it up?
Right. So it, it does take time to deliver projects. And we're working on trying to condense that amount of time and accelerate projects. You know, when the town passed the $10 million, we really didn't even have the opportunity then to move forward with the project. So then we had a project funded before the town put in their funding. And in the meantime, our, our way of prioritizing projects changed. So in 2013, the legislature changed the way projects were prioritized and kind of shifted from a, kind of a build it and they will come project that built a lot of projects on, on the ends of the state where there weren't a lot of traffic, to where the projects are now moving forward in the populated regions where they are today. And I follow the legislature, the general summary for doing that. But because of that, it kind of clouds some of the questions that you're asking me and how I can address them, particularly as things change in the middle of the process. You know, I will say, for initial, once, once that law passed and once we went to an initial funding, that the, the segments that were funded, the first segment that was funded was the segment just east of 485, basically the Stallings segment, because it had the highest traffic volume. And the way that traffic volumes typically work is where there's the most population in the center city, that's where the, the highest volumes are. They, they kind of taper off the farther out you get. So you can imagine at, at 485, that, that coming off of 485 and out of Matthews Road, that those traffic volumes were the highest. So that was funded, but the Indian Trail piece was not funded. So there were discussions with the town at that time, the town agreed to put in their funding for it and it helped us pull all that project forward. There were some STP, VA funds, some discretionary funds that the MPO had and it also contributed to at that time. Since that time, our, our, our standard SBI funding has become more available to replace that, that discretionary funds with the SBI funds. So it is, it was kind of an evolutionary process. And because of all those changes and the decision they've associated with it, it's kind of how and why I can't answer the question, what happens if we pull our money out. But it also kind of clouds the way, the, the way things move forward.
Follow-up to that, and I know Matthews had a resolution, Matthews requested certain things be done. And I think both Stallings and Indian Trail requested that they get a four-lane road, not a super street essentially. What's going to happen, well, both Stallings and Indian Trail have made it clear as to what the citizens want, prior council voted in for resolution and so forth. But what's the plan for the Stallings portion? I think it's one intersection, if I'm not mistaken.
Mr. Cole, I apologize, we're hearing from some residents at home that they're having a hard time hearing you. If you could please speak up.
Is that microphone on? I think, is it?
I don't think it's on, Mike.
That's fine. So do you just want to yell for a couple minutes?
What, do you think about the question?
Yeah, you can come in. Yeah, sure.
Okay, so what was the question again?
So that's the hot seat, by the way.
That's right.
My question was that both Indian Trail and Stallings passed the resolution and indicating what street they wanted. What's going to happen to the Stallings portion? I know from your presentation tonight, you're presenting the super street safer and, you know, all the other points that you made, but what is the, what, what is Stallings going to get?
So I'm glad you asked that. We have been working with Matthews for some time. Matthews still has what is basically a super street, although it is modified a little bit. We narrowed the median through Matthews. We minimized some of the U-turn bulbs because you have mostly residential development there. You don't have a lot of trucks turning necessarily, so you have different vehicles. And so we designed for the, for the appropriate vehicle. We do have two full movement intersections there, but what we saw in Matthews was a different configure, a different set of conditions. There is a long, established neighborhood on both sides of the road in Matthews. There is significant, established, low, fairly low-density residential behind that, those neighborhoods, or behind the initial row of homes. In addition, there's a railroad line on one side that parallels Old Monroe Road through Matthews. And so there is very little potential for redevelopment and densification. In other words, more traffic volumes that are generated right there, okay? So we were able to combine that corridor significantly. Now, when you cross over 485, conditions change dramatically, and you see wide-open lots of land, wide-open plots, and you see for-sale signs on most of those. And we've had, actually, we've had, we and our staff have had significant inquiries from developers for shopping, you know, stores and grocery stores and residential developments, et cetera. And so those areas are subject to redeveloping and bringing more traffic to the area. And that's why we change things when we come, why we believe it's appropriate to change when we come outside of 485, because of the potential for additional development, additional densification, additional traffic volumes. Stallings has created and approved a small area plan for the Potter-Stallings Road intersection. And that shows a lot of densification right there at the intersection and a mixed-use development right there. They have also opposed the super street, as you're aware, you co-signed the, the resolution with them. We are working with them to identify alternatives that also, that still reduce the phases that, like we have today, but is, is a departure a little bit from this design, but still is not a, a, a standard traditional intersection, full movement intersection.
All right. I have one question.
Yes, sir.
With the addition of the bypass and the changes made to 74 and all of the attention brought to it diverting all the traffic and moving it quicker, why do you still feel to see the need to do this to Monroe Road?
To do Old Monroe Road?
When that's mostly residential.
Again, we, we just entered, we just updated the traffic forecast, and the traffic forecast included the Monroe bypass, included the improvements to 74, and we're still, you know, the forecast still only, the volumes declined only by like 3%. So there's still tremendous growth expected for the area. You're experiencing, experiencing it today, and we'll probably see that over the next several decades. And so we're trying to provide a corridor that is flexible and able to, resilient, able to accommodate those needs.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking so much time this evening.
Thank you.
That'll bring us to the economic development update. Mr. Evans? The floor is yielded to you, sir.
I promise mine will be about a sixteenth of the time. In the past two months that I've been in my position, I've compiled an ongoing spreadsheet, currently consisting of 84 various commercial retail contacts. Of those 84, there are currently 11 serious contacts that have shown interest in being part of the Indian Trail community. And they are as follows. One community bank that wants to open a full-service bank branch and possible ATMs throughout the, the Town of Indian Trail. We have five commercial developers with projects that include commercial, retail, and mixed-use developments. We have one hotel developer that's currently looking at several sites on the 74 corridor and Indian Trail. Four retail that includes a variety of retail identified as a need in Indian Trail. A possible... A possible site there is the Indian Trail, Indian Trail Town Center Project. I have the spreadsheet here. Anybody have any questions?
How soon are we going to see the banks and the hotel and the retail?
A lot of that is hinging on some of the projects that are pending approval.
Any other questions for Mr. Evans?
I don't have any questions. I don't, I know I said last week, I commend you for your job you're doing. I think you're doing a great job and keep up the good work.
Thanks, Dave. I appreciate it.
Ms. McIntyre?
The context that you're making, do any of them include any possible projects that are near to in terms of proximity to the Monroe bypass that's being built? Have you had or made any contacts for any of the land that's kind of opening up?
Yes.
How many of those have you made, if I may ask? And can you give me some ideas to what the, maybe they're still secret, but?
There are about four that are rather large projects.
Okay. What is rather large?
I really can't say, but they're significant, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are they more geared to the retail or commercial development on that side?
It would be both commercial and retail.
Mr. Mayor and Council, if I may add, tomorrow we have a meeting with the bank. Today, we had a meeting with the hotel developer.
Who?
I'm sorry, sir.
I couldn't hear you.
Oh, tomorrow we have a meeting with the bank. And today, we had a meeting with the developer, the bank, the hotel developer, I'm sorry. And they both look positive. So we could say if we continue working with them closely, both of them will happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. That brings us to employee recognition. Mr. Sadik, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Council, tonight I would like to recognize one of our top performers that played a key role in preparing the budget that you adopted. I don't see many employees beside me, but that, those couple of weeks, this employee was here at nighttime, working on a spreadsheet, trying to get the budget done. Briefly, she does take care of all financial related stuff, reconcile all bank accounts, general ledger, reimbursement. If you don't have a receipt, you won't get your money back. She was heavily involved with the audit. She does have a bachelor degree. She's planning on taking her CPA exam. And like I said, many late hours and we always get around in the offices that, has Gaddy been in the office? If she visits you, that means there's something wrong, needs to be corrected. Allow me to say thank you very much on behalf of the organization. You've done a wonderful job. This is Alicia Gaddy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alicia.
That brings us to public comments. Thank you for your interest in participating in the public comments portion of today's regular meeting of the Indian Trail Town Council. Please be aware that these meetings are recorded and can be heard by anyone through the internet. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not give your three minutes to another speaker to increase that person's allotted time. Comments are to be directed to the entire council as a whole and not individuals. Citizens will be expected to be civil in their language and presentation, act within reasonable standards of courtesy. We ask the audience as well as the speakers to maintain order and decorum in your conduct throughout the public comment period. That being said, you may not engage in slander, name-calling, personal attacks, or threatening or otherwise aggressive speech or behavior that I or council reasonably believe will immediately result in a disruption of the meeting. Finally, we ask, we just want to do a favor. If you have a grievance, concern, or complaint relating to a specific town employee, we respectfully request that prior to airing your grievance here during public comments, you first contact the town manager, the town attorney, or one of us on council with your concern. We respect your right to be heard and we ask you to respect our town's employees' rights to a fair hearing on your grievance. When I call your name, please step to the podium and your time will begin once you state your name.
Good evening, Michael Falkenberry, five nineteen Picket Circle. For agenda item ten C, should I expect to hear the town attorney quote the state statute regarding town government isn't required to provide documents that don't exist? If so, then the council voted to disapprove a road project that costs twenty-two thousand dollars with no cost breakdown. In regards to the economic development, whatever happened to the Economic Task Force that was created just a few years ago? One of the council members was a member of it. I believe they also had closed session meetings pursuing projects, which to this day, we still don't know what happened with those meetings. Also, for the bond for Old Monroe Road, your best bet is to do another bond referendum to allow the voters to speak, as in did twenty-eleven, because things have changed in the last several years. There was no super street mentioned in two thousand and eleven or twenty thirteen when I attended the first committee meeting with DOT at SPCC. Your best bet is to let the voters decide if they want to spend that ten million or not in twenty nineteen before the construction starts for this project. Let the voters decide, take the responsibility out of the council, as they want to agrees, the residents have the voice. Also, over the years, I've helped residents and business owners in addressing problems with the town government. They've come to this very podium and spoke. They didn't have trust. Hopefully, the trust is not an issue now. And in doing so, when I've helped others, including three of you behind those microphones have called me in the past, asked for my help, nowhere did I sign an agreement for you to slander me or disrespect me and my wife. That was not in part of that help. I was glad to have helped. I did find some things, some wrongdoings. I even met at a council member's house before she was on council. We addressed the issues and hopefully those issues have been resolved. But that being said, I don't come here to be disrespected. And if you use my name, I will use your name too. That's how it works. It's to be fair, isn't it? I try to be respectful. Also, it was revealed during the last council meeting and public comments, residents claim a town staff member said something that was not true. In regards to having a meeting with DOT, make an agreement. I would think it'd be best for that town staff member to apologize publicly to that individual. Again, shows respect. Thank you.
My name is Beverly Jones. I reside at fifty-one oh-two Old Charlotte Highway. As most of you are aware, I am against the super street project, U four-seven fourteen. This project will greatly impact four schools, Sun Valley Elementary, Sun Valley Middle, Sun Valley High School, and Shallow Elementary. I cannot see where this project will be beneficial to take the super street a quarter of a mile east, down toward Monroe and end at Hayes Road. The new Hanfield Village dental office is scheduled to open August the eighth. There is no entrance to the dental office from Old Charlotte Highway. You have to turn into the public's entrance and then make a left-hand turn to enter the parking lot for the dental office. There is a wide sidewalk in front of the dental office, which was paid for by the town of Indian Trail, which is of no benefit to anyone. If you're standing in front of the dental office, the sidewalk going to the right ends into a wooded area. And the sidewalk going to the left, going toward the fish house, ends into dead grass. There is no activity on this sidewalk, not usually during the daytime. The town could have saved that expense by omitting the sidewalks in both directions. And the DOT could have made another lane leading into Wesley Chapel, Stouts Road, to help the traffic flow. The best and most logical place to stop the super street project is at Wesley Chapel, Stouts Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Mary Wynne Rolletta?
My name is Mary Wynne Rolletta and I reside at fifty-twenty-five Old Monroe Road. As you all know, I'm adamantly against the super street on Old Monroe Road. I want to thank the council for your support, concern, and revisiting the project with the DOT, although it looks like they are going through with the super street regardless. This has all been said before, but I'll say it again and ask, why does the town of Indian Trail need two super streets running parallel within three miles of each other? If the super street design really works, like y'all said, then seventy-four should be able to alleviate a lot of the traffic on Old Monroe Road and the new bypass should take traffic off of seventy-four. So I ask again, what is wrong with a traditional four-lane signalized road? I would have liked to have seen more data on this from the NC DOT. I think most of the time was spent on pushing the super street. We don't need extra big medians that get overgrown and there's nothing wrong with a few stoplights along the road. This would also eliminate all the control of access points with the current bulb turnouts that are very intrusive. As already mentioned, the super street design was not even one of the options when the NC DOT had their first meeting about widening Old Monroe Road. Since the super street announcement for Old Monroe Road, there have been numerous hearings, public feedback, and even a resolution from the town, but nothing has changed in the way of another street design. I'm told now it's too late to make changes largely because three million dollars has already been invested in the super street design. I don't think it's ever too late to fix something that needs to be changed. Coming up with another design would be the best investment this town could make with the ten million we are giving the NC DOT. The town of Matthews has been successful and I hope we can say the same about the town of Indian Trail. I would also like to see Indian Trail have smaller medians in the middle of their roads like Matthews was able to negotiate. Thank you again for your support. We simply need a wider street, not a super street.
Brian Wyndham, four-eight-four-nine Old Monroe Road. First of all, thank you for having the DOT up here tonight with updated plans. Mr. Cole, you'd asked before what was the resolution. I can now see that I will, looks like I will be able to stay in my home. Unfortunately, pushing the bulb down and impacting my neighbor in their yard significantly. You know, I've talked about the safety, I've talked about the traffic studies, the accidents, and I'm not going to rehash that. I just think that with the super street going on seventy-four, if we do the same thing on Old Monroe Road, I'm sorry, I don't have any data or studies, I just have to look and see what my eyes tell me. I see what's happening on seventy-four. Mr. Cole did caution against an unfinished product, but my wife is already changing her patterns of traveling and not shopping at locations that are on the other side of seventy-four. And I think where we're heading is kind of where the state of California, the residents there wanted to go and split into three parts. I think we're going to have IT Main, IT East, and IT West if we allow this proposal to go through. So, you know, those are my concerns. Still concerned about safety. I don't understand why we have to have a sidewalk on one side and a ten-foot wide bike path on the other. You know, McCall Pine Creek Parkway handles both, all in one little bit of, and that's quite a bit of real estate there to, you know, to allot to that. So thank you for your time, appreciate your ears to listen to us, and thank you.
Thank you. This time I'll close public comments and move on to the law enforcement update.
You got item B on six B?
Yeah, you want council feedback?
Oh, council feedback, sorry.
Is that move along?
That's still something new, not used to it. My bad, council feedback. Thank you, Chase. Any?
You were having a little stuffy.
Well, that's twice I've done that. Let's hope there's not a third.
I'll keep you on track, man.
Thank you. Chase?
I'm glad we got that out of the way. So I'm going to be real brief on the law enforcement update. Just cover two more important things and then spend a little bit more time later on in the meeting, whenever we've got another item on the agenda. So I passed around, left copies for each of you on a report that was recently done, the North Carolina Child, the Voice for North Carolina's Children. And mainly, I wanted you guys to look at, look at the last page of that, just a percentage across the state on children that are in foster care due to parental substance abuse. And we've been talking in the past about some of the opioid epidemic going across the state. So just kind of keeping in mind on these numbers that a lot of that is depending upon what the DSS or foster care is able to determine is the main reason why, why a child is wound up there. But it's a pretty staggering look at some of the numbers on here. You know, with Tagga County, forty-eight point nine percent of children in the foster care they're showing to be due to substance abuse. Union County, twenty-nine point one. So just to put that out there for just as a, as an FYI, a little bit of information. So the last meeting that we had, we talked about investing in cellphone stores and why to and why not to, and whether or not you're going to get a great rate of return. So bringing further advice, I will say it's probably not going to be beneficial for us, so let's scrap that idea. But at about three AM on Sunday morning, we had some guests of the town come from Charlotte with the intent on breaking into one of our local cellphone stores and stealing some items, to include a bunch of cell phones and catch register. I'm not promoting to be a criminal, but I'm going to give you some advice on what not to do. The last time we met, we talked about the guys that were running from the deputies and they turned into Brandon Oaks. And that was a, don't do that. If you're not from around here, you're going to get lost in there. The other thing is, is don't come into an area with a lot of orange barrels, a lot of cones, and a lot of detours and nighttime construction work, because that's probably not going to turn out to be beneficial as well. So these guys sounded an alarm whenever they broke into that store. At the same time the alarm was given out, because there is a delay, the Stallings Police Department had an officer sitting over here on Stallings Road who observed a car speeding down Stallings Road, pretty much jumped the railroad tracks and had a headlight burnout. There again, don't drive like an idiot if you've just broken into something. So they began chasing them. They went around the block and why, but they decided to come back in the Indian Trail and down Indian Trail Road, at which point Stallings lost sight of them. And Deputy Nolan, Deputy Allen Nolan picked them up on seventy-four. And they got turned around and I guess their GPS got pointing them back to Charlotte and they were hammered down until they got to construction at Stallings Road, at which they hit a, I call them a Jersey barrier, a big concrete median thing that's designed to let your car not go there. And at ninety miles an hour, it tore the car all to pieces. So one of the people in the car, as the car came to rest, jumped and ran from the vehicle. The rest of us would be quadriplegics if we had been involved in something like that. But they were able to get out of the car, jump and run. The other two had major injuries, or one of them had major injuries on them, so the deputies had to attend to them. The fire folks came out, EMS came out. Long and short, we arrested the driver, twenty-four-year-old Maurice Clay, obviously. And he was charged with felony fleeing to elude arrest, speeding ninety in a fifty-five zone, careless and reckless driving, possession of a firearm by a felon. He had a gun on him as well, and other charges associated to the business break-in. Twenty-six-year-old Anton Johnson from Charlotte was rushed to CMC Main for emergency surgery for facial injuries that he received during the crash. And the investigation's still ongoing where they're tracking down the third guy. But we'd laugh and joke about it, but at the end of the day, these are somebody's kids. They just made bad decisions. And the sad thing about it is, is that they, they should be asleep and getting prepared to go to work the next day. The scary thing about it is that they're armed with a gun and they're coming into our community, from neighboring communities. And so I'm proud that Stallings had an officer in place that spotted something that didn't look right. Proud that our guys, you know, were able to pick that car back up and get them. But it's just a continuation of some of the things that we've seen coming into our area, just like Cabarrus County is seeing coming into their area. We're neighboring city from all that stuff, so it's not, we're not immune from it. And I'm going to brag on Anthony back in the back for a minute. Last night about midnight, he stopped a car over here on Waxaw Indian Trail Road and for a registration violation. And when he got up there talking to the lady, she seemed a little bit dazed and confused, didn't have an ID on her or anything. Turned out she had a silver alert out on her, meaning that she was an elderly person at risk who was missing. And so she had left her sister-in-law, if I'm thinking right, at a car repair dealership, or car repair place in Charlotte, and just got confused and got back in the car and drove off. And so she didn't have any information on her at all, but Anthony was able to track her back down. her back down, and EMS got out there and checked her out, and her family was able to come get her and pick up the car. So that's a good, that's a positive. We got somebody back home that needed to be back home before she got further lost, got in a wreck, or got hurt even worse. So I thought that was a pretty good job on his part. I told him just a while ago, that's, that's as good as getting the, getting an arrest made as whenever you can get somebody back home to their family. So I look forward to spending about three hours talking to y'all about apartments here in a little while. Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Quick question. Do we still, do you still patrol or do any work over at the Walmart? Deputies?
We still...
They've gotten away from the, we'll give you a little video and hope you don't steal again. They've gotten away from that. Based on the fact that we're seeing some of the traffic in for the cell phone stores, do you see any uptick in sort of the incidents reported at Walmart from a theft recovery?
So, so two totally different animals. We're dealing with a Ferrari versus a, I don't know, not a Ferrari. So two totally different animals. The people that are stealing at Walmart, two different levels of those. Number one, local residents who are hurting and, you know, just don't have the means or the money to get what they need or what they want, so they're over there just petty theft, you know, small, they go over there and steal something. To them, not that big a deal in their mind. Then we've got the second, I guess, category of theft going on at Walmart, and these are people that, that's what they do for a living. They get up and they leave their house, and they drive down and they steal things from Walmart, return it to other Walmarts, get the money back, go steal again at the next Walmart. So they may leave and drive all the way to Rockingham to start their business day out, a group of them in a car, and they clean Walmart out in Rockingham and drive to Wade's Burn, return it. And Walmart gives them money back for it, for their own stuff, which, hey. Then they drive, and they steal while they're there too, and then they turn around and drive to Monroe, return and steal. Indian Trail, return and steal until they get back 485 and go back to Dallas, North Carolina, or Gastonia, or Dallas, you know, wherever they're from, Cornelius or anything else. But they're taking our corridor down through here. And then the next morning, they're going to get up and drive west and go do the same thing and drive north the next day. So they're not the group of gang-type members of what we're seeing doing a lot of these robberies and these break-ins of businesses and things like that. A lot of these are gang-associated acts that are happening. They're looking for cell phones for a reason. They're not really going to be able to sell me or you that cell phone and us carry it and go get activation services on it, and they're not putting on Craigslist. What their goal is, is to try to jailbreak or get that cell phone open to where they can do narcotic deals on it using Wi-Fi from somewhere, making it untraceable and untrackable. So that's their big lure to getting their hands on cell phones. The other thing is, is that they're propensity for violence, being armed, carrying a gun with them when they're down here, breaking into, we had a restaurant break in just last year where there was a Old Monroe Road right there near New York Pizza and Pasta. Well, I say it was restaurants beside a restaurant, it was the smoke shop there beside of it, but some of you might remember me talking about the guy standing on the video right there at the corner of that building with a rifle, waiting for our deputies to get there on the alarm activation while the other guys cleaned out the cigarette shop. You know, that is a different level of theft. Whenever you're armed, you're prepared to fight, and you're prepared to use violence to take whatever it is that you're wanting to take. So I'm not making or discounting the person that goes over to Walmart and steals a CD, that's wrong. Or the person that goes over, my kids are probably laughing right now, CDs are probably an old thing of the past, like 8-track, but I'm not discounting the person that goes over to Walmart and steals an item. But I am saying the person that goes over to Walmart disarmed and is willing to hurt you, your wife, your family, the person working behind the register, or the person just getting buggies in the parking lot, that's a different level of classification of person that we're looking at. And that's what we're starting to see more of an uptick outside of the Charlotte region. These folks are willing to come out here, and it's nothing new. I mean, what was it, 2013, we left a town meeting and had a robbery over here to fire out subs from guys out of Charlotte. It's nothing new, but we're starting to see that more and more on a continuous basis. Our goal, Anthony's goal, my goal, Josh's goal, all of our goal is to set the tone for these guys and don't come back to Union County. So while some places in the other areas won't chase or won't pursue or won't do certain things, I'm willing to calculate those risks. And if we've got to call a pursuit or got to call a chase because it's too risky, we'll do that. But if the road's open and it's available, we're going to go run them down, and we're going to drag their butts to jail, because I want them to know, don't come back to Union County, just like the people that come to Walmart and steal. I'm kind of on the bridge of, we're trying to do our best to juggle the volume of workload that comes out of a place like Walmart and kind of get into what we're going to talk about here after a while. But we're still trying real hard to set that tone of, if you come to Indian Trail and steal, you're going to go to jail. So, you know, if, if, I hate to say it, but I'd rather these groups of people that are stealing go to Cornelius and steal. I'd rather them go to, you know, go to Huntersville and steal. And it's nothing against those towns, but you are paying us to make good decisions out here that are going to keep that kind of stuff out of here, and that's what we're trying to set the tone for. But when we do get to the point of where Walmart's at, to where there, there's so much constant influx, then we have to weigh out where is our better use of time at, because at the end of the day, if Walmart is our victim versus everybody else out here, Walmart's calculating that into their profit losses at the end of the year. Lowe's, big box retail store, same thing, they calculate that into their cost. But totally different animal, if that makes any sense. Long answer to a short question.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.